The regular council meeting, January the 9th, 2013, will now be called the order. I'll ask the city clerk if she'd please do the roll call. Phil Michael will be here just a little bit, he's going to run a little lecture. Tiffany will be shooting for my thing.
Mr. Michael? Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Gearing?
Here.
Mayor Pike? Here. Could we pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any at this time, any comments on any of the agenda items? No comments? Alright, I'll ask the city clerk to read the resolutions.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the report of the treasurer for the month of December of 2012, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed.
Any comments, Mr. Jones?
No comments.
Uh, Mr. Palumbo?
No.
Mr. Gary?
I did check and have some conversation with Mr. Giacchetti and they are checking into some of the discrepancies that I talked about in the past.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown, council hereby accept the minutes of the December 5th, 2012, regular council meeting, and then December 28th, 2012, special council meeting.
Mr. Jones, who called? Mr. Palumbo, no comment. Mr. Gary?
I just wish we could get these out a little earlier. I did get a chance to review it since the meeting is late before this meeting, but again, they weren't in my box when I picked them up at about a little after 1:00 today. That's all.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown, council hereby directs the director of council finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered, for products procured for the city of Uniontown for December 2012 invoices. In the general fund, for $144,852.30. Civil funds, $131,777, which includes a transfer to the recycling fund, $2,677.61. Off-street, $13,865.27. Recycling, $1,034.43. Community development, $125.25. Highway, $8,387.40. And recreation, $1,509.37.
I have a question on the transfer and recycling, what's...
We do that every month to fund the accounts payable and also go payroll, that we have at the home site.
Okay. Mr. Michael, do you have a comment on that?
Over there.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Palumbo?
No.
Mr. Gary?
No.
Mr. Michael, we're voting on the invoices?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown that the following persons be reimbursed for the city of Uniontown local service tax for the year, the reason, and in the amount appearing after set forth, the total amount of $144.
It's three times fifteen, two times forty, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. Michael, comment?
No comment.
Jones?
No comment.
Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown to adopt proposed ordinance number 1668, bill number 1688, and ordinance amending the Uniontown Fire and Suspension Plan to add a board of managers to decide pension claims other than disability claims.
Mr. Michael?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
My comment is similar to the last time, I think that we should be doing, treating all pension boards the same and doing things the same and not differently for one department.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
No.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown that has further recommendations of K-2 engineering made at the bid openings for safety work improvements at the Uniontown Police Station and upon revisions made by the low bidder, EZ Construction LLC, to accept a revised bid of $30,000.
Mr. Mike? John, is this your recommendation? Yes, we worked with the low bidder, we did some value engineering on the project. It's certainly, again, a safety issue that we're trying to address down at the police station, we can improve safety for the officers in their, in their working environment. It seems to be the best value that we can get at this time for replacement of doors and windows and things like that at the police station.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
No.
No questions. Mr. Palumbo, no comment. Mr. Gary?
My only question, just want to double check with the solicitor, because we changed the scope of work a little bit here, did this need to go back out for bid, or are we allowed to value, value engineer the project? They were the low bidder the first time around.
That's correct, and we actually did not change the scope of the work, we just, we actually value engineered the material being used. And basically, the major savings is we went from a real heavy gauge door, it's still a steel door, but we just decreased the gauge of the metal door, so it's...
No, but I would say no.
Yeah, well, there's some other miscellaneous that said in here that, you know, some of the painting of the drywall and some other stuff that they're not doing now that I assume that was in the original...
There's some new house things will be done by a real model contractor.
Yeah, well, that's what I was getting at, the change in scope, and so...
I don't think that's really...
We're only about a 10 percent...
Typically, under contract law, as long as we don't modify it, we don't 10 percent.
Yeah, yeah, you have to have, you have to have a material or substantial modification, that doesn't sound like it to me. It sounds like it's fairly meaningless, I think we're alright.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown, based upon the provisions of ordinance number 1576, section 3, which formally adopted article 173.10B, and based upon the recommendations of the plane actuary, Dunbar, Bender, and Zapp Inc., members' contributions to the fire and suspension plan and policeman's pension plan for the calendar years January 1, 2012 until December 31, 2012, and January 1, 2013 until December 31, 2013, are hereby eliminated.
No comment. Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
Just showing that the, both funds are still in reasonable shape.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the mayor to sign a sidewalk maintenance agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation at the SR51 and North Mountain Burnett Avenue intersection.
No comment. Mr. Jones?
No.
Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
It didn't have, it didn't have a map, is this the area of, I know it was talking about the sidewalks where the, where the bridge was? Is, is there additional sidewalk going? Yes, I'm in favor of it, I'm just kind of curious.
That's the way I remember it, yeah.
Like where the memorial is? Going, Fireman's Memorial, is that where we're...
Yeah, I'm, I fire my memory, I remember that.
Yeah, that's what it says, I remember, it explains it in number 3, yeah. Under, say, 051 of Colick Run between the offices, that's right there, Colick Run, 51, intersection right there?
Right.
It explains it, number 3.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown to approve the attached proposal of Kevin Holbert of Laurel Computer Systems to update the DOS system in the treasurer's office for the management of the local service tax records at a price of $1,000.
Mr. Michael?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
I have a question, how often does this get done? Or when was the last time that it was done?
A long time.
Do we know? That's what I'm assuming, but that's what I wanted to...
It's not been done the last five years.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown that Reverend Vincent Winfrey be appointed to serve on the city of Uniontown library board to fill the unexpired term of Robert Kahn, term to expire January 2016.
He's played library board?
You skipped the last one you gave us.
Okay. They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown that Reverend Holbert be reappointed to serve on the board of directors of the downtown business district authority, term to expire December 31, 2015.
Mr. Michael?
Oh, that does a nice job, so.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Palumbo?
No comment.
Mr. Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
They resolve by the city council of the city of Uniontown that Reverend Vincent Winfrey be appointed to serve on the city of Uniontown library board to fill the unexpired term of Robert Kahn, term to expire January 2016.
Mr. Michael?
No comment.
Mr. Jones, who called? Mr. Palumbo?
I know Reverend Winfrey and, of course, he's a past member of the Uniontown school board and currently involved in a lot of community vault activities and not to mention a great pastor and governor, so I recommend him highly.
I kind of echo that too, he's a great man in the community.
He's still on the board, isn't he, Joe? Are you still on school?
Yeah, I think he is, I thought, I was thinking maybe...
I think he's a good employee, yeah.
Very good. Mr. Gary?
No comment.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.
I have a motion from the solicitor, right? To authorize the mayor to execute the deed on behalf of the city of Uniontown as, as grantee conveying to the city a certain parcel of real property situated at Eater Street, Uniontown PA, and more particularly described in, in the office of the record recorder of deeds for the Fayette County PA in Record Book Volume 1822, page 180.
Do you want to explain that a little bit? What this is, this is the, the old police station, you know, the one next door that's fallen down. The, that building's currently owned by RW and Lena Washabel, who currently reside in Fort Worth, Texas.
He's kind of the one right behind us with all the items?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Basically, something needs done with that building, we've been in the process of, you know, our code provision notices and so forth, and what they've done, you know, in lieu of us going through with the procedure to knock the building down, they issued us a quick claim deed to this property, now the quick claim deed hasn't been executed by the city, it's grantee. I'm a little unclear as to why, at this point, as to why this has to be a quick claim deed, I'd much rather have a general warranty deed. Something I'm gonna have to talk to Mr. Ross Kavinsky about, Vince Ross Kavinsky represents RW and Lena Washabel, if there's some reason that they have to give us a quick claim deed, that's fine, we'll just record this, we will have title to the property, but we'd have a better title if we got a warranty deed, which I'd prefer to have, and that would require the mayor to authorize it, so, just basically jumping ahead here a little bit and getting that out of the way, so if we get a special warranty, the mayor's authorized to sign it.
Are you suggesting we table this till that's done?
No. I'd, I'd rather just get the authorization now, so that way if we can get a warranty deed...
This is the authorization for a warranty deed?
For, if, if we get a deed, it be either special warranty or general warranty, we're authorizing the mayor to go ahead and sign it, the only thing that we would have to sign is called the coal clause, it's a provision in every deed that makes the grantee aware that they may not be purchasing rural or subsurface rights to property, just because they're getting the surface doesn't mean they're getting what's underneath. That would be the only place that it would need signed by the city. Like I said, I have in my hand a, a quick claim that was prepared on behalf of the Washables by Vince Ross Kavinsky, and it's executed, so if we filed this right now, we would have that claim to the property, but we'd have a better claim if we had a warranty deed, and I'm not sure at this point why they conveyed this to us as a quick claim, because we conveyed it to them back in 96 as a warranty deed, so they shouldn't be able to warrant to us that the tile was clean, at least since they've owned it, I would think.
What are you trying to do with this, like, what are you doing with this?
I, I don't know exactly what our plans are, but something needs done, because the building's in bad disrepair. John did an inspection of it, it's got exterior damage, it's got interior, it's got structural, the structure's been compromised.
They'll have to come down.
Most of the ceiling fell in, you know, when you go up to the second floor, you're looking at the sky, you know, there's...
When did they, when did they buy this?
96.
What were they gonna do, I mean, they should have done right.
It's basically just been sitting there, I mean, there's evidence that there's been no maintenance whatsoever for a very long period of time.
It can't be salvaged, huh?
It was sold to him, if I remember right, for $2,500.
That's great.
And the city one time wanted it back, and he wanted $200,000.
That's great.
Now, he's gonna give it to us.
Yeah, and I think...
What a cushion that is.
For the conversations that I've had with John, I mean, I think it's gonna cost $100,000 to even make it safe, so, I mean, we can discuss what we want to do with it, knock it down, make it a parking lot, renovate it somehow.
We'll have to play...
Parking, parking's at a premium right there, you can make some money there.
That's, that's what we're looking at.
The bottom line is, we gotta have title to it first before we can do anything.
Right.
But we're not authorizing to accept a quick claim deed?
Uh, we, we could accept a quick claim deed if that's all we can get, but I, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather have a warranty deed if we can get it.
Well, I'd like to know, you know, if, if we're gonna vote, whether or not we're, you know, voting to authorize the mayor for, for special or, or the, or the general warranty, and that we're not, not voting for the, for the quick claim at this point in time, as Blair was saying, we can table the quick claim, because we could do that, we could do that next month.
If you want to do that, we can table the quick claim. And then if I find out that we need a quick claim for whatever reason, then we can always come back and approve the quick claim and file it, but, uh, record it rather. I just, at this point, I, I don't know why this has to be a quick claim, there may very well be a reason that it has to be, but it's a little, I don't wanna say suspect, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, you know?
Your motion doesn't have a quick claim...
I make a motion that we table this until you see what you can do there.
You don't have the, the warrant though to say quick claim, you say execute the deed.
Yeah, it's always jumping ahead, basically.
So, we table that up? I'll second Blair's motion, we table it till...
We table it till we figure out...
We didn't give him a second on the first motion, then he wants to...
Yeah, you don't...
It died.
Yeah, so Dodd, if I have a second, we'll, we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
That's all I have here.
Mark, do you have something you'd like to add to the meeting?
Not a thing there.
Nothing?
We sold another house on Maple Street, three of 1148.
That's, that's number six, right?
That'd be number seven.
Number seven, I think.
Yeah.
Very, very good.
Getting ready to finish our park on Lemon Street, and we bought two more dilapidated properties on Lemon that feel will be demolished shortly here. I'm gonna prepare the site for a couple new homes there. And we have a funding application to build, build a couple homes there.
When will we dedicate it?
The park? As soon as good weather gets here, spring, yeah, we make sure all the landscaping's still living and...
And to those who said we couldn't do it, again, we come through. Jeff, do you have something to add?
Yes, Mayor, you know what, I did put in your boxes the newsletter, we got some funding through, through the action to put this out, we did one last year, it's kind of like an annual report for the three neighborhoods, East End, Galton, Lawfare, so hopefully you guys gotta copy that and take a look at it, see if you have any questions, but it really talks about, a lot about what the different neighborhood groups did in the past year, we have pictures of the houses in there, we have the park in there, we have, talked about the gun buyback program, the shed we put up, put up on, over Prospect Street, uh, the, a lot of the activities, the East End is held, the Galton Avenue is held, so, um, yeah, and that was...
It shows, that also shows that storage building on Prospect, right?
Right, the shed, the greenhouse, yes.
Very good.
Yes, and actually, we got 2,200 of these, the grant helped us mail these out, so they went to all three neighborhoods, East End, Galton, Lawfare, so every household, those three neighborhoods got, got one of these, so, um, and then the other thing I wanted to do was thank the council, Blair in particular, for Home for the Holidays, the Christmas celebration, Blair donated the tree, appreciate all the council's support on that, I think it was a really nice evening, we had a lot of people in town that night, the mayor helped us out a lot with that, Public Works, Phil, police, fire, everybody really kind of pulled together on that, it was a beautiful night, we had, I think, record crowds, I mean, they, the train said that they carried more passengers than they ever have for the, for the holidays, and then we had a lot of different activities in town, Sartre 1812 and Jantiques, Gary's building, wanna thank Gary for opening up the Fayetteville Building for us, so, yeah, I think it was a really nice event and appreciate everybody's support on that.
Very good. John?
Really, the only thing I'd like to, and Tim's already advertised the meeting, we did not get a chance to meet with the West End of Oakland Avenue about the, the traffic calming study, that meeting will be next Tuesday at 4:30, it will be advertised in the paper, can make sure that today, so, just to put it on record, we are going to meet, I will organize the meeting and hold the meeting and have staff here for the meeting next Tuesday at 4:30.
Mayor, um, things are good with us, no problems, we ran like 659 alarms last year, I have a complete breakdown, I'll have the council's boxes tomorrow, we're good, no problems.
That's what we want to hear. Phil?
Mayor, yeah, I would like to address to the community, some of these plumbers, out of town plumbers, are coming in hitting some of our residents with large bills on sewer line replacement, water line replacement, some of them are even carrying prepaid credit cards to pay, I just want to have John go to detail a bit more of some prices, I'm not gonna mention names of the companies, but I think the city needs to address this problem.
Yeah, there, there are, I mean...
They're trying to gouge them, you mean?
They're absolutely contractors out there gouging unsuspecting elderly, unknowledgeable homeowners, and, and the big thing that we would like to try to convey is, is that everybody that works within this city, any contractor that works within this city must be licensed by the city, I would encourage all homeowners to ensure they at least get two bids for any type of work that they need to have done in their home, especially as underground plumbing work, I, instead of inviting Pittsburgh firms in or anybody like that to, to, especially if it's an insurance claim, they try to like take advantage of them, but get two bids, we, I mean, the state of Pennsylvania, ten, several years ago, adopted the homeowners' contractors license law, make sure that contractor is licensed in the attorney general's office in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, they are supposed to have their license number on any material that they give them, I mean, it, it certainly is a, I mean, it's cost some of our city residents a lot of money for work that could have been done locally, I encourage anyone, anybody in South Union, North Union, city of Uniontown, if they have a question about a contractor, they can call my office anytime, we give out free advice all the time, we will direct them...
Don't we already have a law on the books, does these people have to be registered, paid to fund the city of Uniontown?
Yeah, but they, they, they come in without our knowledge, Blair, so they're coming in the city and leaving, in and out before anybody even knows about it.
And, and Councilman, the, the one lady I'm talking about in particular, got a, a store backup, and the contractor came with a credit card, all she had to do was sign for the credit card, tating was $12,000 for top $700 job.
Well, can't we follow up and find out who they are and find them?
If we knew, if we know when they call them, that's why we need the public to let us know, we, it's harder to police when they come in.
Well, you're asking the newspaper to publish something like that.
Right.
Informational.
Well, prevention is a whole lot better than cure.
Yeah. If, if we know someone has a problem before they make a, a choice of a high price like that...
Sure.
...to, to let us know, and we...
They're having them sign legal contract documents that...
We came across one today that the lady paid, it was 10 feet of sewer line, two foot deep, paid $6,100 for, and she signed a contract, and they're having them sign contracts, so she, she stuck in the, in the building.
They got me, I'll be, I'll tell you, they got me, I had a sewer backup, and the only problem you have here, you can't get nobody to come to your house, they say they're gonna come, but they never show up, now if you got a backed-up sewer, what do you do? So, I called the company, they come in, they charged me $14,000. Lucky I had insurance, I paid for half of it.
And that's what they're banking on, they're banking on these...
Exactly right, but you can't get nobody to come to your house.
Well, that's why I think we need information out there, maybe they could...
Call the city, if it's in the city, or go south to...
They got me, I admit it, I'll tell you the truth, they got me.
Well, we plumbing the people like that, do their kind of work, and they're local.
That's, I'm not gonna mention names, but the locals seem to be on top of the game as far as their pricing, these are out of towners, and, I don't wanna mention names, but one of them was handing a card out with a picture of Christ on it, and a Toner Lady and, you know, it, it, they're, they're, there's some pretty bad, bad people out there.
I think the best advice is to call K-2 Engineering, they said...
Absolutely.
They'll give out free, the advice, so...
Right.
Use the free advice.
And you also know who's local and who is into that kind of thing, and they have history behind them.
And they have also license by the city.
They're licensed, right, they're licensed by the city.
And, and, yeah, I'm not gonna limit it to, to one specific contract or anything like that, if they ask us, we'll give them a list of contracts.
Sure.
They're licensed with the city, they're licensed with the city.
Yeah, right.
Should we publish, I mean, Phil, would that make sense if we published who's licensed with the city? I mean, that's public information, why, why don't we publish?
I don't know.
Yeah, but it's, it's also never changing database to... I know, but we can do the current one, we can publish a current list, is that solicitor, is that the...
Yeah, no problem, I see, but there's a practical, and like John said, the changes that we could keep in current, I suppose, there's no legal problem, it's public information.
I think we should publish a...
I mean, there's... I mean, there's permitting over my desk all the time for like...
Do we need a motion? I mean, we can post, yeah. Why don't we do that? Why don't we post a list?
I don't see why we couldn't.
Yeah, well, John, why, why don't we post the list? Instead of publishing it, we can post the list here in city hall and maybe the newspapers could put that in there, that there is a list posted.
Phil, you got something you want to add?
No, sir.
Jones?
No.
Plumbah? Gary?
No, sir.
Kim, you have anything to add?
No, Mayor, everything's good. Just one more, everything's just fine, thank you.
Good way to start the year. All right.
We resolve by the City Council and the City of Union Town, the council adjourns to meet Wednesday, February 6, 2013, at 4:30 p.m. Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Plumbah?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mayor Pike?
Yes.